The second item before us is the Urbana City Council meeting of January 7th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Here.
Hazen. Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item is approval of the minutes from previous meetings, December 10th, 2018, which was a joint meeting with Cunningham Township and December 17th, 2018. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Are there any corrections to either set of minutes? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? I do request a motion to add one item under new business, and that would be for a closed session to consider setting the price of considering, to consider the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C6.
I'll make a motion for the addition.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so that will be added to new business, item three. Public input is next. I have one person desiring to speak, Tail Gray. Possible ordinance to allow use of low-speed electric vehicles or neighborhood vehicles on city streets.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess I'm here to speak in favor of broadening the definition or increasing access to these sorts of vehicles. Before I go any further, I wanted to show pictures of what I'm talking about because they're, they're sort of not obvious what I mean. Look at the pictures folder. Can I do that? Okay.
You can take over.
I'm a map person, so I don't know how to do this. They're quite like scanned through.
Double-click it.
Quickly.
Oh, yeah.
Double-click it. Okay, yeah, so that's one example. There are hundreds of these. These things have become more or less ubiquitous in certain parts of China. They're basically half the width and half the length of an ordinary car. Can we go, is, I don't know, maybe somebody else could drive it.
I can if you, here.
You just want to flip through the different pictures, yes. They come in all kinds of styles. They technically, sort of in terms of mechanics, this is basically a golf cart in the sense that it runs on, you know, car batteries. It has a very limited range. They typically have a maximum speed of between 20 and 30 miles an hour, depending on the models. And Urbana has an ordinance right now which prohibits, specifically prohibits the use of this sort of low-speed neighborhood vehicle outside of, they're allowed inside a certain university zone by university personnel. Outside that zone, if they can attain a speed of 20 miles an hour but less than 25 miles an hour, they're banned. I guess if they can go faster than 25 miles an hour, then it's a car, whatever. It's like, it's enough that it is just a car, and then it can go on the streets. This seems a little bit arbitrary. And, you know, so I'm wanting to encourage some sort of a discussion about whether it's worth looking into maybe removing that ban or modifying it to be less sort of arbitrary about this gap, this speed range. The Village of St. Joe, for example, has an ordinance that permits use of literal golf carts on its streets. As far as I know, they have not had a problem with that. So, yeah, I think at this point, I'm just asking that people think about whether this makes sense, or if there's any sort of objections that people would raise. It is, if we can go up one level and play the video, yeah. So I've somewhat preemptively actually arranged for one of these things. This should be arriving in about a month. This is, that's the specific one that I'm getting. I think this one actually will go above 25 miles an hour and therefore is possibly already okay in Urbana, but, you know, if I bought a slightly different model. So I'm hoping to sort of spark a discussion about, should we have more of these things in town? I think they're great.
Bill.
Do you know how much yours is going to weigh?
Weigh?
Yeah.
Ooh, that's a good question. So I, I happened to randomly remember that the shipping weight is around 420 kilograms, I think, but I don't know how much of that is the crate. It's actually probably in one of those documents on that disc, but I, yeah, I don't know exactly.
And do you know what, can you get a state license plate for it?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, I've been researching it. It is possible to get a license, I mean, you can get a, you know, register anything, including something you built from scratch, as long as you have it appropriately inspected. There's a process for, you know, non-standard vehicles to be inspected and approved, and they, they actually make up a VIN number, and then it becomes a car in the literal, you know, legal sense. Getting insurance for it is a whole other question. One issue with these is that, you know, if you try to buy insurance, they'll say, what's the make, year, make and model? Well, okay, it's a 2018. The make is some series of Chinese characters that I don't know how to say. And, you know, as a company that has absolutely no presence in the U.S., I don't know really where to go from there. So I'm looking into exactly how to go about registering it, because that does seem to be, all the ordinances require, like the St. Joe one, require that it be, you know, licensed, basically it has a sticker, you know, it needs to have a license plate, a sticker, and an insurance. And that seems to be possible to get in principle for virtually anything that meets, you know, basic, you know, it has to have headlights, brakes, seatbelt, you know, the, the basic requirements of being a car. If it meets those requirements, the state will license it, then you got to figure out how to get insurance for it.
Okay. Yeah, and I think St. Joe's ordinance for the golf carts, they have some kind of internal mechanism for approving the, a sort of license or, the golf carts.
As I remember reading it, they, they just require it to be licensed and have insurance.
Through the state. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which then the state has, the state has a law which says these, you know, things that can't go over 20 miles an hour and are kind of, you know, more, more directly golf carts are not automatically permitted on the streets unless there's a local ordinance permitting it. But the state law says that there can be a local ordinance to allow them. And Urbana has such an ordinance, but only if you're a university employee and you're operating it within a certain zone, and it is defined by some square around the university.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to understand a little more of why, why you've come forward and talked to us about this. I mean, are you?
Because I want to drive one back and forth to my office.
All right, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's basically it, yeah. I mean, I saw these things in China, they're everywhere. They're completely silent, they're convenient, you know. Why, why should I drive a full-size car from, you know, my house on Michigan Street to downtown Urbana? You know, there's no street with the, the speed limit over 30 miles an hour, half the way is school zone anyway. It's complete overkill to use a full-size car. But on the other hand, I don't really want to ride a bicycle, because what if it's raining? I've always carrying stuff back and forth. This seems to me like a perfect intermediate between, you know, and it's, it's, they're very inexpensive, they're small, they just, I calculated something like 30 cents a month of electricity is what this thing is likely to use if I drive it back and forth every day, so.
So do you see these being, navigating mostly residential neighborhoods, or do you see them going shopping, going out to Walmart or going to Menards?
I, I mean, you know, it has a maximum speed of 30 miles an hour, so I would not think that I would be taking it to Walmart, say. That seems like a bad idea, I don't know. You know, I think they're called neighborhood vehicles because the idea is on low-speed neighborhood streets, you know, the kind of streets that have a 30 mile an hour limit. You know, that's how fast they go, that's what they're designed for. They can sort of go up and down hills, but we don't really have that problem. But you certainly wouldn't want to take one on the highway, probably wouldn't, I imagine, be legal anyway, you know, certainly not on an interstate.
So they'd be operating at their maximum capacity all the time, pretty much?
If you were going 30 miles an hour.
If that was the speed limit. Well, I guess you could go slower.
You could, you could go slower. I mean, I don't know, between my house and office, go right by the, the high school, so, you know, several blocks of it is 20 mile an hour anyway. And, you know, I don't think, we, you know, if you go, you go along Ray Street or something south from Lincoln Square, I wouldn't be normally driving 30 miles an hour most of that way anyway, just, you know, too many stop signs and things.
Thanks.
All righty, thanks. One more, Eric.
So, just a comment and then leading into a question. To the best of my knowledge, we permit on the streets motor scooters that sort of operate at this speed, and so it seems inconsistent not to permit these guys and to permit, you know, a Vespa or something like that.
I, I don't know.
But then the, the, the question that I would have about the motor scooters and about this, are there any places in the United States, American cities, where one can, can, where they've been legal for a long enough time that there are any safety statistics?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, that's not, not something that I'm an expert in. I've certainly never seen one in any city I've ever been in quite like this. I mean, you know, there's, there's, let's say, retirement communities in Florida that have golf carts, but they're really golf carts.
Right.
You know, they're, they're open, not, not enclosed. This thing has heating and air conditioning, though, it's completely enclosed, it has windshield wipers. You know, it's, it's this weird hybrid between mechanically, it's a golf cart, but stylistically and functionally, it's a car. And I just, I've just never seen anything like that here. And I, I shudder to think what the safety statistics are in Beijing, but I don't think that's because of these cars.
Yeah, but that, they would not necessarily apply here, yeah.
Right, yeah, I hope that we would have a reasonably good experience with them. I mean, I compare it to, you know, like you say, a little Vespa, thinking little motorcycle or a bicycle or something like that. I mean, it's, you know, in terms of, I mean, it's bigger than that, right? But it's, it's, I don't think it's a whole lot more dangerous to be operating one.
Yeah, there are a lot of vehicles at about this speed, motorized rickshaws in India, but Indian traffic is so lethal that I don't think the safety statistics would.
Well, it's remarkable, the transformation that they have, they and electric scooters have created in China, because it used to be a smelly, noisy, dirty place.
Right.
And now, it's like, whoosh, you know, you don't even hear the traffic, because everything is electric. It's, it's really quite pleasant. And the thought of, you know, downtown Urbana where much of the traffic is essentially silent, relatively low-speed electric cars, you know, just people going back and forth short distances within town, it seems to be like a pleasant prospect. Unrealistic unless the thing is small enough that you could also have a real car. Like, I would not give up an actual car for this, because what if you want to go to Walmart? But this thing is so small, and, you know, so relatively inexpensive, I think my model is $2,500. So, you know, people pay more than that for a bicycle, not me, but people do. And, you know, and it'll sit in a little corner of the driveway somewhere, plugged in, so.
I, I guess I'd just say I'd be in favor of asking staff to give us an ordinance to consider.
I'm told that they are operating in New Orleans, so.
Oh, really?
Something to look into.
Cool, well, I'll take a look at that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any unfinished business? Don't believe we have any. Reports of standing committees? Special committees? Reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have one item of business under ordinances, and that's ordinance number 2019-01-001, which is an ordinance approving a major variance at the Cunningham Children's Home sign, 1301 North Cunningham Avenue, ZBA case 2018-MAJ11. Lori Pearson, Planning Manager.
Thank you. So I will be, try to be brief. This is a major variance for a new sign that is requested to be larger than would typically be allowed for the new entrance at the Cunningham Children's Home off of Country Club Road. And the ZBA took this matter up, had a public hearing on December 19th, and unanimously forwarded it to you for a recommended, with a recommendation for approval. Basically, they found that the criteria have been met. In essence, the sign is requested to be larger because it is set back more than what would be typical. And the reason it is set back more than what would be typical is because primarily a new sanitary sewer easement that we have asked Cunningham to grant to us for an old sanitary sewer line that they have done. And they don't want to put the sign within the easement, of course, and so it is set back 20 feet from the property line, where typically it would be able to be 10 feet from the property line. And in addition, they also granted to the city additional right-of-way along this stretch in order to accommodate a new multi-use path off-street. So it is about 46 feet from the street, and therefore 46 feet from its intended audience, and so they have requested it to be larger than what would normally be allowed. So just in terms of its location, this is Country Club Road here, and the new entrance, if you haven't seen it, it's in line with the, with Golf View Drive to the north, and then a sign off to the west is proposed to be on this wall, a brick wall on the west side, and the easement is shown here, and this is the new property line. It used to be closer to the street before they made that right-of-way dedication. So as I mentioned, the ZBA found that the criteria have been met, and they did recommend approval to this body. I am happy to take questions.
Any technical questions? Dennis.
Could you show me where the easement is? Because I know that one of the discussions that happened in the planning, the ZBA, no, Planning Commission, was that part of the sign rested in the easement, it encroached it, and so want to talk about that just for a second?
Sure, the sign itself is outside of the easement. It is part of the wall on which the sign is affixed that is proposed within the easement. So the easement line is this dashed line here.
That one, okay.
So a portion of the wall. And basically, in essence, the, the thought was, and I don't think anyone from Cunningham is here this evening, I apologize for that, but the thought was, the sanitary sewer line is probably closer to the center of the easement, so if they encroach upon it a lot, it is unlikely that it would be affected should there need to be some repair here. But if they were to encroach on it a great amount, it is more likely that, should there need to be a repair, that the whole wall or the sign would need to be dismantled at great expense, their expense, of course. So they were willing to put a small amount of the wall in the easement, but didn't really want to tackle, you know, much more than that.
So I didn't really see in the, in the ordinance that we're talking about tonight any language that would require Cunningham Children's Home to be responsible for repair of the sign if we had to dig through it. Is, do we need to add that to this ordinance?
That's in, that's in the easement language. That is a separate document that's, I'm sure, already been signed. It's, it's just typical easement for utility in that if you have something in that easement, it's really up to you as the owner. That's just typical language for.
So if you had a birdbath in the easement, that would be up to you to repair it or replace it or something?
Precisely.
I see.
Bill.
So will the stop sign be on the south side of those angled signs?
I don't know that I have seen a traffic control plan for the site, and when I was out there, there was a lot of construction fencing, and I doubt they'd gotten to that point yet. But it would need to be, I would imagine it would need to be on their property. I'm sorry, was your question outside of the easement or outside of the multi-use?
I'm just trying to figure out how the stop works at those signs, and whether they'll be able to see any approaching cyclists or pedestrians. If they're stopped on the other side of the wall, they wouldn't probably be able to see through there. But if they're stopped on the forward side of the wall, they'd have a better view.
I can be sure that our traffic engineer is aware of your concern, and they can, they can look into that more closely.
Do you know how much distance there is between the front of the wall and the, the multi-use path?
Well, between the front of the wall and the easement is 20 feet, so at that location.
Maybe 12 feet or something.
Yeah, I mean, certainly enough if you were to put the stop bar or the stop sign somewhere in this area.
And, yeah.
You'd be able to see on either side.
Just kind of wondering how they consider the traffic triangle or, you know.
Yes, it was a vision, a vision.
The vision triangle, if they, if they consider the multi-use path in that, or if they are more concerned with just the vehicle.
They have on other projects, so I would imagine that would be the case here. But I can confirm, and we'll make sure that it's safe.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move ordinance number 2019-01-001, an ordinance approving a major variance for the Cunningham Children's Home sign at 1301 North Cunningham Avenue, which was, came from us, from the appellate board of appeals case number 2018-MAJ11, forward to the full council with recommendation for approval.
We are full council. We are the full council.
I'll just recommend we approve that, then.
The buck stops here.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Hazen. Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda are statements from the five applicants for the Ward Three City Council seat. I do have one member of the public who wishes to address the council at this time. I also wanted to give some little context for this before we get started, so I think I'll provide the context first. We'll have Mr. Aaron Ammons speak, and then we'll go into the statements from the five applicants. So first of all, I wanted to thank all the applicants for their willingness to serve the community. Each person brings different perspectives, ideas, and interests to the position, but one thing they all have in common is a desire to serve the community, to work for the good of Ward Three, and for the city of Urbana. So I invited the five applicants to speak tonight so they can introduce themselves to the public, to the community, to the city council. But in case somebody is turning in for the first time or one doesn't know quite all the history here, I wanted to give a little background, and then we'll get started. So on November 30th, 2018, Ward Three Alderman Aaron Ammons resigned his seat following his election as Champaign County Clerk. Under the state law, per our mayor council form of government, the mayor has 60 days from the date the city is, the seat is vacated, to recommend an appointment of a person to fill out the remainder of the term. This term ends on May 3rd, 2021, following the consolidated elections in April. The city council must then vote on the appointment within 30 days. Applications for the seat were available from Monday, December 3rd through Monday, December 31st, 2018. There were four legal qualifications per state statute. Those included, a person must be eligible to vote in municipal elections, they must have resided in the city of Urbana in Ward Three for at least a year, they must not owe any delinquent taxes, fees, or fines to the city of Urbana at the time they take the oath of office, and they must not have been convicted of any felony in any U.S. court. So as the applications came in, I interviewed each of the five people individually, and again invited them to speak tonight. So tonight, each person will have up to five minutes to talk. The city clerk will keep time. The applicants will speak in the order in which their applications were received by the city clerk's office. There will be no extension of time, no follow-up questions or discussion of applicants at this council meeting. Copies of the applications were included in the packet that was provided to the city council, and they're also available in the back of the room tonight. So if all goes according to plan, I expect to make a recommendation to council next Monday, January 14th, and I will ask for a vote on the appointment at that meeting. I know that residents of Ward Three are anxious to fill the seat and to begin working with their new representative. City council has a number of very important issues to consider over the next few months, and I, it's very important that all parts of our community are represented on the council. So again, thank you very much to everyone who considered filling out an application, those who did fill out an application. I want to especially thank my assistant Kate Levy and the city clerk Charlie Smythe, his staff Wendy Hundley and Kay Mahary for their assistance during this process, keeping track of everything. And I also wanted to thank the staff at the Urbana Free Library and the Douglas Branch Library for helping distribute applications. So we'll start off with a public input from Aaron Ammons, and then we'll begin the statements. I should say, Champaign County Clerk.
Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing? All right, take me back to some old days. All right, so I am here to just, I wanted to, first of all, also thank you all for going through this process to make sure that we have someone to represent us in Ward Three. It is very important to all of us that we have a voice to represent us. And so we've held, maybe you all are not aware of this, I think the mayor is aware, but we held at least three community meetings at the church to reach out to the community, to invite people to come and participate, to put their names in the hat, to see who was interested in, in filling the vacant seat. So I sort of facilitated those meetings in answering, answering any questions that anyone would have about the process or about the, about what they can expect as a, as a council member. The mayor did come and offer some of the requirements and things that you have to do in order to, to fill the seat. So in those meetings, the four people who definitely attended those meetings, Pastor Courtney Carruthers, Shirley, Sharice Hershey, Stacy Burnett, and Eldrae Carr were all at all of those meetings. And many of you know that, for instance, Eldrae Carr has been at more meetings than some of you, right? Sitting here to raise her concerns, but also to listen in and witness what's taking place around the city of Urbana. As well, I have seen Pastor Carruthers at meetings here, and Sharice Hershey, and Stacy Burnett is a member of the Human Relations Commission. So we have, all those individuals attended those meetings. We had conversations, numerous conversations about what to expect, and as you can see, they have dedicated some level of service to this process. I have read Mr. Josh Accre's statements as a fellow BSW and SEIU member. I'm, I'm happy to see him step up. I've never heard much from him otherwise. I didn't see him at any of the community meetings. I've never heard from him prior to this applying. Certainly, me being missing, or Carol, or someone else being missing from this council does take a level of diversity that I think is necessary on this council, does take that away. So I certainly would be advocating for that as well. And I've had very open conversations with all four of these potential candidates that have come to the community meetings, and had a very open conversation with Pastor Carruthers, who I think is very dedicated to the community. We've had many conversations since he learned that I was running for county clerk. I happen to believe that it would be nice to have another female, another woman voice on this council. Instead of six men and one woman voting, we would have another, another female voice on the council. So I wanted to just come and to share with you all my thoughts, and to really drive home the point that we worked pretty extensively, I believe, those of us who were reaching out to members in Ward Three, asking them to come to get involved, reaching out emails, social media, word of mouth, doing everything we could to try to get people, radio ads, all type of things to get people to come out. And the people who showed up consistently at the church were Sharice Hershey, Eldrae Carr, Stacy Burnett, and who am I missing? And Pastor Carruthers. So I think that's important, because we wanted to make sure that there was someone who was going to show some interest in this process. Lots of people knew that I was running. I announced back in September of 2017. So the potential of me winning that seat and vacating this seat was there for lots of people to see, and those who were interested did step up and express that, that interest. So I hope you all will take that into consideration as you deliberate on who you will vote to, to replace, or to fill that vacant seat. So thank you all very much, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Okay, first to speak tonight is Pastor Courtney Carruthers. And I did want to make a note in the revised agenda that the council has, Stacy Burnett's name is listed, it's just on the back page, so it's not like we left her off this list.
Good evening. Let me get settled, okay? Good evening, everyone. My, my name is Courtney Carruthers. My wife's name is Sybil Carruthers. We are transplants to Urbana. We moved here in February, January 2017. We have three children that are, two are in college and one has graduated from college. Names are Candace Faith Carruthers in Washington, she lives in Washington. Other one is Charlene Hope Carruthers, she lives here in Urbana, works in Champaign. And my last child is Courtney Joy Carruthers, she lives in Texas. My wife is an oncology nurse. My wife is an oncology nurse, and we plan to live here and retire here in order to be close to our children and our families. I myself am privileged to be the pastor of the Dublin Street Church of Christ. I feel as though my calling and occupation as a pastor, working full-time with the people of my community, will allow me to bring a unique perspective to the city council. I am therefore the joys, the sorrows of my people every day. The weddings, the funerals, and the prayerful nights in the hospital waiting. I counsel those who are starting businesses, struggling financially with single, and with single parenthood, with medical problems, or with relationships. I work every day with young people who find themselves without purpose and in trouble at school or with the law. Prior to moving to Illinois, I was blessed to have the opportunity to serve my community in Texas as a deputy sheriff for four years. In many respects, the job shared many aspects with my career in the ministry. At the same time, it was some of the most difficult work that I have ever done, and I gain a great amount of appreciation for those in uniform and the demands they face both physically and mentally each day. Being able to function as a liaison to improve the relationship between the Urbana Police Department and people who live in my ward is part of why I seek this position. As you know well, Third Ward, the city of Urbana, is a place of amazing diversity. It is home to two top-notch hospitals, including a regional trauma center. The Third Ward is proud to both host a portion of the campus of a world-class university. We have rural Urbana residents and industrial facilities to the north, and urban residents and students housing to the south. Our ward is home to students from all across the globe, to middle-class families, but also to families who find themselves struggling to survive grinding poverty. The Third Ward is a place of incredible potential, both human and geographical. Every day, I work with young people who are eager for the employment opportunities that municipal growth and development can bring. I see neighborhoods with neglected structures that need to be rebuilt, and streets, drains, and other infrastructures that will be improved. I also visit seeing citizens in my ward and in the hospital who are alone, whose children have moved far away from Urbana, seeking opportunity that we do not have here. This is why Mayor Marlin, a vision of the urban that is, had vision of an urban, Urbana that is open for business, excites me. People in our district are hungry for purpose, for opportunity. The Third Ward, more than any part of the city of Urbana, is in need of jobs and the tax revenue for that responsible, carefully-planned growth could bring to our home. If appointed to the council, I would be a hard-working colleague to you all. I promise that I'll do my best to support the hard-working staff and civil services that work for us. So with that in mind, if you have, I hope none of you are allergic to chocolate, but Kit Kat has a slogan to say, that has, we, give me a break. Our community need a break. We need a break from all that I read about. And in retrospect to that, each of you have a small portion of that Kit Kat that represents where you work and the people that you deal with every day of your lives, even sitting here. But we working together cannot, we working differently cannot build a unit, a unity alone, but we must come together to get the larger scope that we all represent people, no matter what war we in, and this is the larger piece that we want to get to with the hope of Mayor Marlin and all you sitting here tonight. Thank you for your attention, and God bless.
Thank you. Excellent timing as well. All right. It's on you too. Next up will be Mr. Josh Akri.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Sharice Elizabeth Hershey. I have been a resident of the Third Ward since I was a child. And I moved from the Third Ward, as many children do when they grow up, to go someplace else and experience life someplace else. And I was living in the city and county of Los Angeles, California for 25, almost 30 years. That gave me a lot of opportunity and gave me different perspective on how communities work, even in the small area in which I lived. And I lived in different areas of LA, actually. I lived in Long Beach for a while, I lived in Inglewood for a while, and I lived in Culver City for a while. If I am chosen to fill Mr. Ammons' seat, I have dedicated and feel dedicated to just improve upon what has already been done with the Third Ward. There's, we have a very long way to go. I feel that a grocery store is definitely needed. I feel that we need neighborhood associations as well as neighborhood watches, considering the violence that has been happening on the north side of town for quite some time. And I know since I've been, since I've been back to care for my mom. I think everyone in, not just in the Third Ward, but also in the city of Urbana, would like to feel safe in their homes and safe to walk down the street. At the time, right now, I don't feel any, any, any harm coming to me when I walk down the street, when I walk in my neighborhood. I always have, have always felt comfortable, even in the most violent of times. But I know that is not everyone's, everyone's feeling. I feel that the Third Ward is, is viable and has been one of the main wards in Urbana that has brought Urbana into the progressive area that it is and the way of thinking that it has, it is now. But like I said, we have a long way to go. And I would appreciate your consideration, even if I'm, if not chosen, that the Third Ward get, get its, have its contribution recognized with historical plates or something, because it was the Third Ward that has dragged the city of Urbana into the 20th century. And I do think that that should be recognized. If asked, if given the opportunity to serve, I want to serve everyone, and that is my goal, to not just serve where I live, but to serve everyone. And inform everyone, because information is power. So I do believe that if given that opportunity, I would do a very good job at serving everyone in my ward and serving the city of Urbana. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Eldress Melinda Carr.
My name is Eldress Melinda Carr. To Mayor Marlin and the council members on tonight, you see my face a lot of times and probably in the past few years, probably in a protest status, being sort of an advocate for Dr. Ellis Subdivision. And I was planted there a few years ago on a mission, and I wanted to start off with a scripture. And when I was the president of the Minister Alliance for Champagne, Urbana, and Vicinity, that was a mission for me, that was an assignment. And so I had a scripture that the Lord gave me to carry me through that journey. And so this scripture, I'm going to read. Psalm 15. Lord, who shall abide in the tabernacle? Who shall dwell in thy holy hill? He that walketh uprightly and worketh righteousness and speaketh the truth in his heart. He that backbiteth not with his tongue, nor doeth evil to his neighbor, nor taketh up a reproach against his neighbor; and whose eyes a vile person is contemn, but he honoreth them that fear the Lord. He that swerth to his own hurt and changes not; he that putteth not out his money to usury, nor taketh reward against the innocent; he that doeth these things shall never be moved. And my application, when I was asked, why would I serve? Why do I wish to serve? The scripture relates to what I said, and the reason why I wish to serve. And I said that it's based solely on God's purpose for my life at this point, and to be an ambassador for righteousness. And that's why I read this scripture, because my purpose is to try to do the right thing. And as part of this work, there are things that you learn along the way. As part of my time in working with the Dr. Ellis Subdivision residents, we have grown together, walked together in a lot of troubling times. And with me just being there a few years, the residents have been on the battlefield for a long time. There's been historical neglect in Ward Three, and we know some of the issues, but because I've just lived in the Dr. Ellis neighborhood, I don't know some of the other issues in Ward Three. So a survey should be done to talk to some of the residents in the other areas, and that's something that I would like to do, and to have some kind of open meet, meet, meet and greet, a forum for the residents to drop by and be able to just talk, and to hear them on the things that they may be going through. And of course, we can't take care of everything at once, but people need to know they have a voice. And the Ward Three that I've been living in, because I was planted there with an issue with the house that I moved in, I won't go into a lot of detail, but if you check the past meetings, you can see some of the videos where I've been talking. And I appreciate with this process that we are, we're working in an open way to publicly get the people who are interested in this position. Once it's open, and then at the end, if someone does not come to the council by the deadline, then it can be opened up. I mean, then the, the mayor and the council can choose someone else, but I'm glad that the mayor did it the way that she's done it. So I just wanted to say what I had to say and thank the council for allowing us to speak.
Thank you very much. And last is Ms. Stacy Burnett.
My name is Stacy Burnett. I am 48 years old and have been a native in the city of Urbana for at least 40 of those years. My current occupation is a buyer for Vesuvius, a manufacturing company which is located in Champagne, Illinois. As a single mother, I was blessed with the opportunity to raise four children, two sons and two daughters, in the city of Urbana, all who attended Urbana schools. I am also a proud grandmother of five, three girls and two boys. I earned my bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Phoenix in 2010, and an associate's in business marketing and psychology from Parkland College in 2004. I have over 20 years of experience in the purchasing industry, which began in 1994 working for Human Kinetics, a book publishing company located in Champagne, Illinois. I began employment as a shipping clerk. Within one year, I was promoted to the purchasing assistant position, and approximately three to four years later promoted to purchasing specialist through 2013. In 2014, I became a purchasing assistant for Vesuvius, and in 2018 was promoted to buyer. In addition to my occupation, I also hold a seat as commissioner for the Urbana Human Relations since 2016, and also became a member of the MLK Champagne Countywide Planning Committee. In 2013, I became a member and began serving as director of administrative service for the Champagne County Black Chamber of Commerce. I also actively participate as a judge and continue to donate to the NAACP ACO, Afro-Academic, Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics Youth Program since 2013. I have also volunteered in several marches against gun violence in the community and volunteered my administrative skills to a political campaign in 2012. In 2008, I became an entrepreneur and started a home-based business from the ground level under the name of Infinitely Sense, customizing bath and beauty products to creating a business website to running a kiosk in Marketplace Mall in the year of 2010, and this home-based business is still in operation. Why should I represent Ward Three of the Urbana City Council? Because I am a lifelong resident of Ward Three, a researcher and problem solver by nature. I am open-minded and willing to listen to the people of Urbana's issues and concerns and act upon them. We are very familiar with the faces who have represented at Ward Three for many years, and I am grateful for their hard work and dedication to our community. Even through their hard work and dedication and progress, more work is to be done in Urbana, which includes expanding, resolving, and eliminating the following: the string of gun violence, the lack of minority business developments, lack of minority homeownership, the need for mental and detox facilities and programs that are geared toward our youth. It is time for everyone to take ownership, to take action, and become a part of the solution to making our community really great again. This can be achieved together through brainstorming, volunteering, providing skills and resources to implement sustainable economic and social developments throughout Urbana. In the book of John, chapter one, verse 23, is a phrase derived from the scripture that many may have heard. "A voice of one is crying in the wilderness," which is still relevant. However, today, this day and age, the wilderness, the minorities, the homeless, the underprivileged, the white-collar, the blue-collar, the abused, the youth, and many more are crying for a voice, and I'm ready to be that voice for the wilderness. Thank you.
Is Josh here? One last call. Okay. Okay. Thank you again very much for your applications, for the time and thought you've put into this, and we'll be, I'll be making a decision this week as far as the recommendation. Thank you. Last item on the agenda for this meeting is the motion to go into closed session to consider the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body pursuant to five ILCS 122C6. Is there a motion? That's a move.
I move going to closed session for the purpose stated, the selling of property.
Okay. Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Yes. That motion passes. I would like to note that following this closed session, the council will come back to the chambers and will adjourn that meeting. We will then convene our third meeting, which is a joint meeting of the city council and the Cunningham Town Board. We'll go immediately into closed session to review minutes of past closed sessions, but then we will return to the chambers and adjourn. There's no other business on that meeting agenda. So we'll be up and down a couple of times, but nothing else is going to happen in this chamber tonight.
Yeah, nothing worth watching.
Nothing worth watching.
See, we'll need a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. Seeing no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.